...of the village council to order. I'm gonna ask the court to call the roll.
Commissioner Burns?
Here.
Commissioner Manning?
Here.
Commissioner Novak?
Here.
Commissioner Rafferty?
Here.
Mayor Calvaro?
Here.
So commissioners, at our budget meeting, what we do is we suspend the rules. We know we're not taking any official action. There won't be any more roll call votes. This is more or less a more of a casual, different part from our regular council meetings. So generally what we do in the process is that Tim and might be a combination of Tish, is gonna go through a full presentation that will highlight kind of all the sources of revenue and expenses. And then once that's concluded, then we're gonna start with tab number one and work our way through the blinders that you can see out. And we'll go through each department until all of you feel satisfied that these are the numbers that we wanna work with. We always have our department heads here so that they can speak on the app of the respective budget that is presented. They're the best at being able to articulate what's going on there. In addition to Tim and Tish, both of them are gonna be as familiar with all of the departments, but we certainly want to have the person responsible for the respective department here to answer any questions that we may have. So again, while Tim is doing his presentation and even after he begins to look, if he needs to get up to the bathrooms or if he wants to take a break or some more food, just feel free to do so. Any questions so far? Tim?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and thanks for taking time tonight. I know that it's hard at the end of the long day to come back at nighttime like this, especially for budget talks, but we really appreciate it. I wanna just take a moment and thank each of the department heads for their efforts at putting this together and certainly especially Tish for all the work that she's done on creating, you know, not only a budget, but something that's pretty easy to understand so that it's not so overwhelming. As the mayor said in the first couple of minutes, I'll do a quick presentation that will take us through the highlights of fiscal 2015, which is our budget year that just ended, and some of the highlights of 2016. When I'm done, unless there are specific questions about some of the very early pages, we could pretty much go into tab one, and I'll tell you just a couple of the things about tab one, and then we can move on into each department unless there's questions. As the mayor said, this is a thousand formalistic desk, so if you have a question while I'm talking, grab my attention and either Tish or I or any one of the department heads will be happy to answer that question to the best of our ability. Would that be all of it? So I did have the opportunity to speak with each of the three newly elected officials one-on-one, and in that meeting I made sure that we had the department head as well as Tish handy so that we could take them through the general outline of the budget and how it worked and some of the highlights and lull lights, if you will. But I did mention to them that evening, and I'll mention it just one more time, the budget is not a statutory requirement because the Village of Forest Park operates under the appropriation ordinance system. The budget document is a tool used for receipts and disbursements, and it's developed to allocate resources that will provide public services efficiently. Sam reviews this document on a monthly, a document monthly to ensure the budget will balance on an annual basis. So again, as I mentioned the other day, we are under no specific guideline or rule to have the budget. We work under the appropriate, appropriate nation ordinance, which you'll all see in the next two weeks, I think, as that is the document that gives us authority to spend money. That document is created from a budget, and it's just, you know, for lack of a better word, a lumping together of all the various departments that you see. It's important to understand that the Village of Forest Park has a purchasing policy and that any spending has to be done in accordance with the purchasing policy. The appropriation ordinance does provide the legal authority for spending and establishes the legal spending limit, and it must be adopted each year, no later than the first quarter of that year. Go ahead, Sam. Hold please. Can I say? I want you to understand something really important that Tish and I say every year, we say it every year to the department heads, the budget is not a license to spend money. So you'll see on several occasions, and certainly in years past, there's been things in the budget that we've just said, you know what, we can't afford it. We can't afford it this fiscal year, let's hold it. So just because it's in the budget does not mean that it's gonna happen. Those are all decisions that are made frankly by each of the elected officials. They're made by the department heads and then by Tish and I on whether or not we feel that we can do it. But just keep in mind that just 'cause it's here doesn't mean that any of these department heads have the ability to just spend the money. The village operates with two operating funds, and that becomes our general fund and our water fund. The general fund is a main operating fund supported by taxes, grants, fees, fines, and it includes a subset, the police vehicle replacement fund. And the water fund is obviously the water fund. Keep in mind that just a few years ago, the village determined that with the input from our auditors and legal, we determined that sewer expenses can't be paid for legally out of the water fund. So for example, when we do an alley now, I take whatever I can, whatever I can cut out of that total bid price, the sewer portion, and Tish then allocates that to the water fund. And that's helped a lot to keep our general fund operating more efficiently and at a surplus. The special revenue funds that we have, they are restricted. It's a VIP fund, are TIPS and non-biggest governmental funds. Those are committed for specific purposes. So we're all aware now, because we've talked about it a couple of times, our VIP fund, which is a full 1% of sales tax. That money is allocated to VIP. Means it has to be used for infrastructure. I can't in a really bad year say, "Tish, the police department is really running low on a vehicle. I gotta, I gotta get them two vehicles. I'm gonna borrow money from the VIP fund to do that." Can't do it. I can't borrow money from the TIP funds to do that. It has to be spent for what it was allocated for. This is just a huge graph that sort of shows the operating fund summary. I'm not gonna read each of those, but I will tell you that last year, fiscal 2015, we projected a net revenue income of $1,129,000 and change compared to budget at 731,423. The revenues and expenditures entered at 91% of budget expectation. Water fund reached 93%, and expenses at 90%. Reductions in budgeted expenditures and referral assets and infrastructure improvements support the net gain. That is a very clear example of how this budget document works for us. As the year goes on, and we really start at about the sixth month of the fiscal year, to really start monitoring both sides of it, mostly the revenue side, so that if we see that revenue's coming in short, well then we start either deferring expenditures or we start slowing them down greatly. If it looks like we're on target, then we, you know, we keep moving forward, but at six months, we really start operating not quite on a day-to-day basis, but certainly on a month-to-month basis. And each month after that sixth month, each of the department heads gets a copy, and actually the elected officials do as well, of where we stand in that department. So if we see a big line item starting to grow a little bit haywire-like, I know in public property, you know, we've had some years with a lot of trees, that, you know, the tree expense starts going way up, well then we start making arrangements to slow that, the cutting down, the trimming, and things like that. For fiscal 2016, the operating revenues reflect a 3% increase and expenditures a 4% increase over the 2015 budget. Net income expectation is $501,120,000. So that means at the end of the year, what I'm giving this presentation next year, if I'm still here, that I expect that between the, or the operating fund, I guess I should say, the general fund combined with the water fund, I anticipate having about a half a million dollars and so change in surplus, revenue over expenses. So in 2015, here's a couple of the highlights. The Village Hall roof repair, purchased a fire replacement vehicle, fire department rescue equipment, a total of $385,150. And I'll tell you just for a minute about the roof repair. We knew that the roof on Village Hall was old, and we knew that someday it would need to be replaced. Well, some of the storms last year told us someday had arrived, and we went out pretty quickly and got an estimate and actually secured bidding for it, and ended up with $200,000 in the roof replacement budget. Somewhere, Tish and I needed to find that money because the work had to be done. You can see we don't operate with a big surplus in any department, so we needed to find that revenue. The water fund last year, we did a comprehensive sewer study, which we presented here, the last meeting in July there, the results of that sewer study?
Twenty-seventh.
Yeah, on the twenty-seventh, you'll see the results of that study. We did an alley program sewer improvement, a total of $214,000. Out of the VIP fund last year, we did a street patcher project, time alleys, displays out of the sidewalk extended all the way to 22nd Street, a million dollars worth of capital improvement projects last year. We set up federal states of the year funds, we built a garage on the back of the police station, and a vehicle, a total cost of $349,000. Those were big ticket, signature items. Local share sales tax of 13% from 2014. Revenue associated with construction programs exceeded expectations as in fiscal year 2014. So that's a big number to keep in mind. 13% sales tax is one up. This village lives on sales tax. We are not a home rule community. We have no ability to add a tax for fuel, for example, or any of those things that home rule communities can do as a generator of income, a transfer tax, for example, when properties transfer. We can't do any of that stuff because we're a non-home rule. So sales tax going up 13% for us is huge. In those years, 2008 through 2012, sales tax down 10%, sales tax down 13%. Those were really tough, mean years here in Forest Park. Last year, we realized a first full year of collections from the local debt recovery, and that's what we use to subsidize the Village Hall roof repairs. The newly elected officials may not know what that local debt recovery is, but it's basically a program that the village joined through the Secretary of State's office that allows us to put our uncollected debt through parking tickets essentially. There's other things involved, but basically parking tickets. We send that to the Secretary of State. If that license plate and the name associated with that license plate is due an income tax refund from the state of Illinois, they get it as soon as they pay off their obligations to the communities involved in that process. Last year, the village realized $233,000, and that's exclusive of fees. So from that program in one year, we got $233,000 free and clear. We understand, we can't count on that every year because people are gonna get wise to the fact that maybe I should pay the parking tickets because if I don't, they're gonna collect it somewhere away from us. But if we're not getting it on this end, then we're gonna get it because the people are actually paying the parking tickets. So, you know, we should keep seeing this revenue either in this line item or in buying tickets and things like that.
You're welcome.
Go ahead, sir.
You're welcome.
Yeah. John Doe.
Oh, yeah.
But, you know, it's really not a good thing to be a state of Illinois worker because they start, they put a brick on their paychecks if this kind of thing happens. So it's been a, it was a very tough program to get started, and it required a fair amount of work, mostly on the police department side and our collection agency side, because really weekly, we have to send the state an updated version of what we have. But for $233,000 free of the collection fee guide, it's real money. This is one that, you know, it's free money. We recognized $36,000 in savings by using our American Express corporate rewards for computers, equipment, training, and conferences. So the biggest number there is the city of Chicago allows us to pay our water bill with American Express. There's no upcharge from the city of Chicago for using American Express. Flat out, you wanna use a credit card to pay it, we'll take it. So we pay our water bill, which is a million dollars a month, I mean, it's huge money, with American Express. We get points for that. We turn those points into dollars, and anything you can buy basically through Amazon, which is just about everything, you can use American Express points. And last year, we saved $36,000 just by using those points. It's amazing, and of course, you guys will remember reading that we're paying extra because, you know, the city of Chicago's charging us extra. No, they're not. We used to be able to pay our garbage with American Express, and in this last contract, this, nah, you know what, uh-uh, because it costs them 2%. So they, they won't let us do it anymore, but we still have a few people here and there that allow it, and we use it wherever we can, obviously for the points. We reduced expenditures in categories of insurance premiums, the refuse law contract, fuel credit card fees, and all departments, this is important, all departments, we made at under budget of the purchases that projects were deferred as necessary per revenue income. So when you look at things like insurance premium, refuse law contract, fuel credit card fees, those are all things that took action from the village to say, "Hey, Mr. Insurance Guy, we can't do that anymore. You're charging us too much. We need help." And this is where Vanessa comes in. Vanessa works hard with our insurance carriers to frankly beat them up with pricing, and we do. And if you look at our insurance coverages over the last five years, the total packages have gone down. Now, some of that's due to them wanting to keep clients, but a lot of it has to do with all of the department heads who have made a conscious effort to reduce workers' confidence. That's huge. Reduce general liability and casualty claims. That stuff is huge, and that's why these premiums come down. No holler. Just, I think we're into our second year of our daylight waste contract, but that process took us probably six months to go through and put that contract out for bid, and then finally come up with a successful bidder, and a price that was lower than the contract we had that had. Fuel prices went down, we didn't have much to do with that, but thankfully the fuel prices went down. Credit card fees, that's us calling the banks and going, "You know what? We do enough business with you, you gotta reduce your fees." And we talked in and of that successfully. Go ahead, Sam. VIP fund, an additional half a percent. You'll all remember, and I'm sure you all voted, for the extra half a percent for infrastructure fees. That became effective July 1st, 2014, and in that shortened fiscal year resulted in revenues of $852,000. When we passed that referendum, we anticipated a million dollars a year in extra revenue to do capital and projects. That number tells us we were right on with the number. So that's why we have things now like an annual infrastructure program, which we just approved at our last council.
First time ever, five-year.
Five-year.
First time ever we put together a five-year capital plan.
So we're into the second year of that five-year plan. We spent a million dollars last year. You guys voted for and approved about a million dollars in expenses, not quite yet. We will at the next meeting when you get the alleys, it'll be right out there, a million. We are the recipients of a $2.3 million state grant that was awarded for Roosevelt Road. Roosevelt Road, we just created in December, I think we finalized it, was a new TIP on Roosevelt Road. So basically now on Roosevelt Road, from Harlem Avenue to just west of what used to be Motive Parks, but it's, it's, it was a drywall place for a while, now it's a storage lot, I guess, for Hawk. Both sides of the street, pretty much to the alleys, that's all a TIP area now. And we are hopeful, of course, that, well, we know for sure that some of those dollars that are in the existing TIPS are going to be used to supplement that grant from the state so that we can do that massive reconstruction project we talked about on Monday night. And we did complete the comprehensive plan and economic development plan in 2015. Going forward, you may have noticed we're in the middle of a Madison Street reconstruction project. That was done with certainly some of our dollars, but it was also made possible through an ICAP grant that we share with River Forest. We're still working, we are working currently on the engineering study, it's preliminary work for Roosevelt Road improvements as to that state grant and the TIP and the mall funds. And just one second on that, probably this summer yet at some point, the elected officials will see first kind of what, what the plan is for Roosevelt in terms of, you know, what the lighting will look like, what the corners will look like. Of course, it will be changed significantly if the efforts that you guys worked on on Monday night seem through, and we are allowed to limit the size of the street, they'll change to some degree. But because there is some state and federal money involved, it's required, and we would do it anyway, but once the elected officials have seen it and have input, then we'll have some public meetings so the public can see what the plan is and provide input for that as well. Second year in roll, the village has applied along with Oak Park and River Forest for a tighter grant, and that's to completely change and alter the bridge that's at Harlem and Circle essentially, the CTA bridge that probably once a month a truck gets stuck under. The crash data on that bridge is significant, not serious crashes, fender benders, guys getting forced into, you know, the garden or the center stanchions or even the side stanchions. So we're hopeful that this year, you know, the feds receives that to help us out with that one. We're working on, we have state grants for CTA parking lot improvements and Hannah Pumping Station, and then those other infrastructure improvements that we talked about through the VIP and the water fund. The general fund, here's a couple of the big highlights of 2016, capital replacement, so fire engine and ambulance. They happen if we get a big grant from them, and Steve is always hoping and praying for... Steve, I forget, was the ambulance 10 years old? Is that correct? It's at least 10, and the engine is 20 years old. It's hard to really believe that because a lot of us were here when that engine showed up, and they still look brand new. But when you start seeing some of the repairs that we have to do on that stuff to keep it running, it makes sense, especially if somebody will help us with the funding to start the places on that. Big one again, Public Health and Safety for technology and office improvements. Just a little bit on that, we, two years ago, implemented a software system downstairs in Public Health and Safety that starts reducing everything that we previously done on paper, electronic. And it's, the company that designed the software is the same company that does our parking ticket system upstairs, and they've been great at working with us to design exactly what we need. We're taking it to the next step this year. So when this budget is approved and if these line items are approved, each of the field guys will have a, I think we decided it's gonna be Surface Pro, is that what we call it? Surface Pro computer, and the stuff they do home inspections with, for example, will be done on the computer, transmitted back, and there'll be an electronic copy on the account. It sends reminders, it really does everything you need to do. So part of that big number there is to keep moving forward with the technology. In addition to that, for probably since the 50s, whenever somebody built something in town, they'd give us blueprints, show us what they built. We have those blueprints, 50 years of them, 70 years of them, and they take up an enormous amount of space. And you think, well, you know, why do we need, you know, why do I need blueprints on something that was built in the 60s? It's amazing how often it comes up that Steve or somebody in his office needs to go in and find a new, an old blueprint and try to back into the history of how the building was built or why it was built or who was building it, where were the lot lines done, how the street looked. A big part of this number is to start digitizing and storing all those old records so that if I call up 7428 Washington, I can get the original drawings for the building, the history of the building in terms of zoning through the years, tickets that they may have received for, you know, building law violations through the years, whatever it might be, those will be searchable now, and those files will come up. So it's the next logical step. $75,000 is probably, I'm hopeful that it's a high number, because we haven't gotten into the actual report for the work yet, but talking with Tom and Steve, Steve's staff in that office, and these technology guys who would actually sort of make this happen, that's a comfortable number that we can live with if we start looking hard at it. Keep in mind, it's not a license to spend the money. If we start getting that guy in and we start getting down into the nuts and bolts of it, and it looks like, you know what, there's really not a great value to this, or it's gonna be way more, or it's not gonna be real searchable when we do it, we're gonna alter it, and we'll come back to it. For just like this, you would have to see it before we spent it anyway. So it's not a license to spend. And then, the office down there is not good. The carpeting, the paint, it's, it's in really rough shape, and quite honestly, it's been neglected, and it's time to fix that. So there's some money in that to do some of the painting, replace the carpeting. There is money in there also to install a single bathroom that's actually in that department. Right now, that staff uses a public restroom here, and sometimes that's not the greatest thing in the world, as much as we try. Sometimes it's not the greatest thing in the world. Frankly, there are some aspects of it that are a little security concern. You know, if one of our people in there has had a rough time with a customer, and that's, that's not all the way uncommon, because sometimes you tell the folks things they don't wanna hear, it's not good if they happen to meet him in the bathroom. So that's something for you folks to talk about quite honestly, but the way it's laid out back there, there's a good spot for it, there's water and a vent and a sewer pipe close. It's not a great deal of money to actually make. Yeah, what do you, yeah, like 10 grand, Steve? We put in a number of $10,000 to do it. And then, you guys may have heard something about a digital sign. We've had money in this budget for a couple of years now for the digital sign and haven't done it. I'll show you some numbers in a moment that'll give you an indication as to why, but that's back in the budget this year, and it's where the corner circle in Madison, and it's something for you folks to discuss. Water fund isn't too big this year. We're doing a bunch of water in Madison Street, 800 block of Lakefront. We got all the sewer that we do as it comes out of the alley projects, goes through the water fund. And a relatively large number we have is for ventilation upgrades for pumping stations, and that's due to the ICPA requirements. That's something. Okay, this is where our money comes from, out of the general fund. And you can see that 57% of the revenue we get comes from taxes. But we look through that line item there, all of those line items, and that's a broad category of how we come up with the overall. category of how we come up with the whole $21 million in revenues. It's an increase of 2.8%. 572,850 is projected revenue increase, and the general fund income projection for 2016 is 22.1. Here's a different tax exam, we get 46% of our revenues are from state taxes, property taxes are 40%, and 14 is from utility and franchise fee. For all tax revenues, we project it at 3%. And frankly, I think that's reasonable and maybe even on the conservative side. I think when I see a number from 2015 of 13% in sales tax that we're figuring on the low end, and obviously all the locals here are dealing in that. From the property tax levy, 1.5 increase in 2014 was 1.5 increase over 2013 for the CPI because that's all we can raise, property taxes. It's one of those home rule things. As a non-home rule community, we can't raise property taxes any more than either 5% or CPI, whichever is less. So all those years when the CPI, as we all know, through the really tough times, has been at 1.2%, 1.5%, one time it was less than 1%. That accounted for $76,000 in revenue. So again, when you hear people tell us that we raised our property taxes, you know, it has been going, you know, crazy, I understand that it's a big number. Many people don't understand that when you get the $10,000 tax bill, the Village of Forest Park gets about 15% of that, somewhere between like 12 and 17 there. So $76,000 was the increase of one year. I'll show you in a minute how easily that 76,000 gets eaten up. I really love this slide, because it makes it pretty clear. 63.2% of every penny the village gets.
Dollar.
Dollar. Yeah, yeah, the dollar. Goals for wages and benefits, 63.2%. An additional 27% in operations and contractual. We're left with 3.7% for grants and 5, or 2, 3.7% for debt and 5.3% for grants. When we talk about operations and contractual, that's garbage, it's paramedic services. That's what I call turning the lights on. Okay? So between wages and turning the lights on, providing core services to the village, we spend more than 90% of every dollar. When you each look through each of your departments and then look through all of the other departments, I define you to find fluff, because it's not there. The village has not operated on fluff because we don't have. So economic incentives, I just want to give you kind of a broad overview of what we do here with the many economic incentives. We have low center, Wal-Mart, Bed Bath &amp; Beyond, we are bought, brand, and Curry Motors. All of them have a couple of things in common. One, we always start with a base. So in other words, I, HAWK Chrysler, HAWK Chrysler is up and running, and they say, you know what, we need an economic incentive to build a new part of our building and get a, get more revenue coming into both of our, you know, the village and to us, but we need a bigger building to do that. It's going to cost us several million dollars to do it, can you help us? Well, the first thing we do is say, okay, well, what are we getting from you today? And that's where we start. So we don't get to start talking about splitting anything that we've already been getting. But if it's new dollars on top of that, then we come up with whatever the incentive is going to be. All of them share two things. They expire either as a result of time, and it's generally 10 years, or they expire as a result of we paid all the money. And in varying degrees, so if if they make an extra $50,000, for example, over whatever the base was set, we split it 50/50 in the varying degrees that you'll see there. So it's been a very useful tool, it's one that has promoted businesses, HAWK, you know, I'll just use them as an example. This Bed Bath &amp; Beyond store, I think the guy just recently told Steve, it's one of their busiest stores, isn't it, Steve? And guess what, if we didn't give them that incentive, they're not coming. So we've used that tool very wisely, it's paid off for us, and as you see over the next several years, several of them will expire. Here's the TIF funds, Dr. Street TIF, the only payout we have on a consistent basis in that one is to Lumley LLC, that's a REIT parent, and we pay 30% of this permanent account finance interest expense up to 200,000, that expires in 2023. Ultra Foods has a 50% of local chefs, local share sales tax revenue generated, a maximum of 1.5 million, it expires in 2024. Those were incentives given to Ultra Foods to have them open here in Forest Park. Kind of an interesting one, it doesn't mean a lot, but it's interesting to note that in the general fund, 1,477 dollars is what we spend per person in Forest Park. Water Fund on the line, you can see how that works. So that's just kind of an interesting slide to see where the money's going and how it's allocated per person. The debt schedule for the fund, the general fund, total debt in the general fund is 3.2 million. In fiscal 2016, we spent 547,000 and change for our debt service. That compromises 11 vehicles, the LAU Streetlight Project, a series of 11 refunding debt certificates that we took all the time building, and 7418 handoff. And Water Fund, total debt's 2.9 million, this year we'll spend over, just over 435,000, and that's all for the debt service on the refunding debt certificate. It was water meters back many, many years ago, and a lot of water main work that we did for that money. Wal-Mart TIF, 980,000 is the total debt left, we'll spend 527,000 this year, and the remainder next year, the really good news about that TIF, let's wake up folks, I see some people nodding off here. I, this one expires next fiscal year. That's really good news for us. It's it's served its purpose, and I don't know if Wal-Mart would ever come back and ask for more help. I think I know what my recommendation to the council would be if they did, and I think the council will accept that recommendation. But that's really good news, that's going to expire here next fiscal year. And then the VIP fund, this was for work that was done in 2005, a lot of water main work, a lot of streets and a lot of alleys. The remaining debt there is 6.6 million. Our debt service this year is 712,000. Keep in mind, that comes from the first half percent of that total 1% sales tax. And if you just look at that number, 712, remember that I said I anticipate a million, that will give me the million that I get through the second half of percent plus almost 300,000 that I can still put towards more infrastructure improvements. One more. Future goals and strategic planning, this will be something that you folks along with the department heads will be taking up sooner than later, but we want to start, especially as the economy starts picking up, as we start to see some of our debt go away, we want to start allocating some of those dollars to put it in our 80-day capital improvement fund. So we're not having to borrow when we need to buy 10 police cars plus a fire engine. So that's a real goal, I certainly know it's a goal of the finance director, director and myself, it's been a goal of the mayor for years, and it's obviously a worthwhile goal. And I I think, for the first time since I've been here, it's achievable, because we're starting slowly through really good fiscal management over the last several years to crawl out of a really deep hole. Review of current fee structure, we're waiting on Heinz. Heinz is a contract that's worth almost a half a million dollars to us. We have, we are at the end, frankly, been at the end of a five-year contract we had with them for about three years. We've been operating on continuing extensions of that contract up until two months ago when we submitted a new bid. Heinz told us absolutely that, tell us by June 1st, we got the contract, and we're still waiting. And...
What's this contract?
Well, again...
What's the meat and potatoes?
Fire protection, so our fire department responds.
We do the suppression there. And it's amazing to me, quite honestly, that Heinz can't pull a trigger on on this and tell us, either you got it or you didn't get it. We suspect that another department bid on it, and I suspect based on some, you know, frankly, superfluous information that they probably bid lower than us, but we also know through the chief that cannot service the contract to the specifications that were written in the proposal. And frankly, what I think is hard is trying to figure out a way to make it work. So that one's up in the air, but...
How long have you had Heinz? Were we at Heinz? Nine years.
Nine years? Yeah, we've been there a long time, and it's it's a great contract for us. So obviously, you guys will be in the loop, when I find out, you'll find out what happens there.
They used to be serviced by the Brockton Fire Department. Brockton, Village Brockton went through layoffs, and they no longer were able to meet the requirements of the federal government with the standing policies.
So, but when you see the kind of margins we operate on, losing a half a million in revenue was a big number for us. So, you know, when when you see the antics, I'm going to call them, of what goes on in Springfield, local government distributor fund, we think that for this fiscal year we're okay. So far, they've said they're not going to bother us with that. What's that worth, 1.4 million to us annually?
750, yeah, thank you.
I'm sorry, I gotta run a little drink of water.
I know, 1.5 basically is...
So 1.5 million is what we get from them now, they've talked about cutting it by 50%. Now, right now, today, that's off the table, but that will be coming up every year. Again, if, and this is what we were struggling with in the early days of this budget process, when they were talking about cutting this, so we lose 750 from the local distributive share and the Heinz contract in one year. So a million and a half dollars for us, that's real money. Pension fund policy for the FBA requirements, and that's how the state of Illinois will start taking over. So here's what could happen in 2016. And frankly, it's going to take some efforts in Springfield, and I can guarantee you the mayor, as well as all of his colleagues, will be down there, but let's say that the actuaries who determine what the pension fund liability is, and I'm making up a number here, just so you know, they say that the village owes the pension funds a million dollars. Village says, you know, I only got 750,000, that's the best I can do this year. State said, well, that's okay, but we're going to take it out of your sales tax. So before we send you a check, we're going to force you to leave all on your pensions. The state of Illinois has nothing to do with our police and fire pensions, they're going to be able to say, we're going to hold your sales tax until you're brought up to 100%.
It's our own debt recovery.
Yeah, it's their own debt recovery. And so, obviously, the Village of Forest Park is actually in pretty good shape with our pensions. There's probably more than half of the surrounding communities that are way worse off than we are, but if that actually happens, that will be a travesty, because that's that's not fair, that's not the right way to attack this problem. So I can guarantee you that the mayor's going to be pretty busy in Springfield.
But globally, the issue needs to remain on us as elected officials, it needs at least remain on our radar.
Because it could happen. In this budget, and I know I mentioned it to the three highly elected officials, but I'll say it one more time for the public, we included in this budget salary increases across the board, I guess, at 2.5%. So we have that number plugged in, so I do that, obviously, so that as we start settling contracts, I'm in the ballpark. You know, I know it's going to be a little more, a little less, whatever it is, but I have to put a number in there so I'm sure where to go. There are no scheduled rate increases in the general or water fund fees. So let me just throw something out there to you, and I'll use garbage as an example. In the contract, the garbage hauler and the place where we dump the waste, it's two separate contracts, they say in their contract that they can bill in or that they can add to our contract on an annual basis, CPI. So again, for the last several years, the garbage contract has gone up 1.5%. Since 2012, the village has not increased the rate to the to the residents for that garbage service. And we have not raised rates on water except for what the city of Chicago has charged us. We're done with the last set of rate increases from the city of Chicago, we were dealing with a four-year slam, frankly, by the city of Chicago on our water. So far, there's no rate increase projected, but the city of Chicago isn't forthcoming with that information. It would not be unlikely that these days, the mayor or bill letter in his office says, by the way, for the next form, we're going to raise water 14, 15, 25%. That's not uncommon, and there's no negotiating. It's really a golden rule thing, they've got all the, they can make all the rules. So while we don't have anything plugged in for either general fund or water, it's possible that that we'll see something at least on the water side. Okay, I'm all in, folks. I want to call your attention just for one minute before I do the stage. Under tab one, we have this sheet that says Village of Forest Park Operating Funds, 2012 through 2015. And at the very bottom of the sheet, you'll see general fund and water fund, income and loss. And if you look at fiscal year ending 2015, in the general fund, we ended the year with a surplus of $32,000. Calling your attention to that just to remind you how close we really operate. $32,000 is a bad snowstorm. I mean, that's, you know, that's extra fuel for equipment, that's overtime for police and fire, and overtime, obviously, for John's crews, it's more salt, it's more everything. $32,000 is a margin we operate on there, and it's, again, you know, the next year is 54, you know, the next year, protecting 22,000. That's why this document becomes so important, because if I'm starting to look at it after six months and I'm not seeing the revenues, I really better start pulling some expenses because I'm only playing with 22,000. So I just wanted to kind of bring that home to you, how close we really operate on our budget. And with that, I will sit down and hand it back to the mayor or answer any questions that could be had at this point.
Any questions at this, so far?
On that first page, 12 to 13, what was the big swing there? From 3 million to the loss?
That was the, so in brigade and general fund, that was the parking fund, we talked about that earlier, but we, we worked in parking fund and for general funds.
Okay, so it's just moving the shot.
Right, so when I talked about the general fund and the water fund being proprietary funds, the parking fund used to be included in that, but after some research, frankly, we determined that it did not have to stay a proprietary fund and we could merge it. So we did, and that's why it showed a big gain that one.
And then the last question on that page, you, you know, $400,000 over budget, you know, what we projected and what you actually did, for this fiscal year, through 2015, you know, just, you know, it is dolts and suspenders, I get that. Do you know off the top of your head if you are over or applying? Do you know off the top of your head if you were over or plus budget in 14 and 13? Like you made 766 and 1.2, you know, did you forecast, what did you forecast? Did we come in or under budget those two fiscal years?
So in 14 and 15, we both answered, I want to say that we did come under, well, the general fund did not, you know, so it was...
Yeah, I'm just talking total, total net income.
But total net income, I believe we did come within budget, under budget.
But our, was our net, was our net bigger than we thought we were gonna net or was it more?
It was bigger than we thought, it was primarily all, it was all water fund.
It was all water.
It was all water fund, yes.
The, you know, it's a hard way for me to phrase this, I was thinking earlier what I could say, but you have to remember that, you know, we've been working on this now for a month or two, and we're, we're making educated guesses, I'm making educated guesses about the weather, I'm making educated guesses that the roof isn't gonna start leaking on the Public Works building and I'm not gonna have to spend 100,000 there. I'm making educated guesses on how much gas is gonna cost in eight more months, and I'm making educated guesses that Walmart doesn't have a big problem. So all of this are estimates, and they're based on as much knowledge as all of us collectively can put together and come up with something.
And the question was just like judging your batting average, you were saying you finished above last year, you know, you guys keeping that trend where you're figuring better than that?
Which has been pretty good. You know, in the six years that I've been presenting the budget, with the combined funds we've ended at a surplus. And, you know, I know if you've read the news, certainly over the years, there's a lot of towns who not only didn't end at a surplus, they laid off employees, they stopped providing core services, they changed the way they were providing core services. And thankfully, our village hasn't had to do any of those, taken any of those drastic measures. As a matter of fact, in the hardest of times, we continue to build alleys, we continue to do roadwork, we continue to do store work, not at the extent that we did, but we've still been clawing forward. So, you know, the village has a lot to be proud of that came out of there. And that's all I have, sir.
Any questions thus far? If not, then what we'll do, we'll start with tab two, the operating funds, and see if there's any questions, concerns there. We can move on to tab three, which is the Department of Public Affairs.
Oh, I was gonna say, I haven't taken that, okay. Are you saying like about, do it my sheet, you know, how much sheet? You know, I can take yours, okay.
All right, so let's move on to tab four, Police Department.
And your projections are pretty much dead out. Like they're, everything's in here 100%?
Unless there's like any audit adjustments, it'd take me by surprise.
When does the audit take place?
Preliminary is this week, and then preliminaries this week, they're in house the next three weeks. And, you know, usually have draft by, our deadline, we have to file October, so usually I have a draft late September.
It's a several-month process.
And anything from last year, anything in the letter from last year's audit that was alarming or...
No, the only thing that's been repeated, basically, is just the adjustments, basically, that the auditors have to, you know, they have to make, you know, we do so many findings, but it's basically for the, you know, it has to do with the fact of like they're adjusting journal entries, just because we don't have the staff to really stay on top of all the auditing, the gas being, all those reporting requirements.
Over the years, Dan and elected officials, we have taken that audit letter, which, you know, I can remember back in the day, as a commissioner, there'd be 13 or 14 items on it. There's one on there now, and they admit freely that unless we hire two or three more people to work in the clerk's office, we can't do it. So...
Hi, I just wanna make a comment to Mike Heinz and Tish and Tim, very informative. They noted all the detail that goes into something, and you sit down there and you go page by page, and tab by tab, with this, another small, one morning going through all the budgets with this. Very informative, but obviously, when you take it home, you look at it, you have questions, and I just come back to these folks here and they've got the issue.
You know, this, the, I'm not sure if it's the right word to use or not, exercise that we go through, you know, as elected officials, and I can only draw on the history that I have here. You know, over the course of time, some, some of these meetings have been contentious and many others not. You know, sometimes elected officials want to focus in on a particular item or two or three in one or two or three departments, for whatever reason, say, I like this or I don't like that. Sometimes those have been, not on grounded information, but because of some other reason, you know, you feel just like chopping something out. It's rare that commissioners wanna add to a particular line item, because in many cases, just like all of you have experienced, you know, you've had the time to kinda go through each, you know, maybe both with your department head, but then in addition to that globally with Tim and Tish, and as you can see, you know, the staff really does a tremendous amount of work at really trying to highlight to the penny in many cases, here's where the money is going, you know? So really, as elected officials, it's all about programming and whether or not, whether or not you feel the programming is proper. Outside of that, you know, we like to give everybody the opportunity to go through every single department.
And just to highlight what Tim said earlier, I mean, with the belts and suspenders, you know, going through this, then you do see it, just in the police one here, you know, even with the contracts expiring, you know, you're budgeting $30,000 less in some wage areas than you did based on the actuals, so, you know, and again, as this is a process, it's a guideline, those are numbers, can we really live within, you know, is that cut realistic and live within it? And again, definitely respect your guys' opinion and see if you guys are making those cuts.
You know, so you always present a balanced budget. You try to have just a little bit of surplus, but minimal imbalance. And, you know, as Tim well pointed out, you know, this is monitored every single month. And in fact, Tish produces a finance report every single month for us, because ultimately, we're holding the fiduciary responsibility. And it is important just to kinda keep tabs each month how things are lined up. But throughout every year, a lot of assumptions are made, and that's all that you can do is make some good educated assumptions on, you know, where do you see sales taxes, where do you see property taxes, where do you see, you know, when the economy starts making its way back up, people are making improvements on their property, and so then we see spikes in purpose, you know, for improvements on property, and that means additional revenue. So, you know, forecasting is a little bit of an art, and I think that our staff has done a good job at mastering that art of forecasting.
I just think how nice it'd be to work in the schools, at one source around, you know, they get their property taxes, there's, no, they don't have to guess that sales tax, they don't have to guess that.
It's a little more predictable.
Yeah, it's a little more predictable revenue, and that would be nice to have now.
And you guys, you know, real, reallocate any, like, full-time funds, where I'm seeing regular funds where you decided to, you know, because you're showing decreases, you know, I'm already at, you know, the next page at the community center where your, your actuals are a lot less than what you did, or can we just reallocate where we're paying this person from, or are we short-staffed?
And we also, we have some staff retired in fiscal 15, so we have new members coming in that are part of a union contract, we're starting at a low base. Fiscal 15 also, you know, we financed the car, but we still have to show the expense of purchasing a car, so that's the, or the two cars, there's 45,000 less than fiscal 16.
But no, I guess, no reallocation, play in the shell game. I used to get 100% here, now I'm only 50% there, 50% there. So we're comparing the hours, the hours.
Yeah, any of the allocations that are listed on some of the sites for salaries, those have been allocated like that for many years now. They haven't been replaced yet.
All right, so community center, any issues in the community center? That will move on to Village Court, tab six. How about tab seven? Eight, Public Health and Safety Interactions. About nine streets and public improvements.
I just wanna thank Tish and John and Tim, I sent them probably six pages of notes and questions, and again, they answered them all. You know, with that, I know you guys have projects and your backup is there. And again, yeah, and I just, you know, wanna assure you guys feel confident, you know, your increases are in some ends, and those are new projects and you've increased in others. And again, respect the fact that, you know, it came in, truly respect the fact that any and all, you know, I gave you half questions and you were adding to the questions, so thank you for your time. I know that pebbly was, you know, in the last hour, and I truly appreciate it.
How about public property, tab ten? Can we get a new village hall?
Sure.
Incidentally, why are you looking at me like?
Rachel said sure on the new village hall.
We obviously can't do that right now, but, you know, I just wanna throw out there, you know, that is one of those things that for a long time, I've always felt it had been a little reluctant to talk about, and pretty soon I'm gonna be scheduled in some strategic planning meetings, but that is one of those things, we need to start thinking out into the future. And we know that we can't do it next year, but at some point in time, our facilities are old and aged, and these things are expensive, and we need to start planning for them, because we won't be able to just all of a sudden, one year, say, okay, let's build a new village hall, or let's build a new fire station, or let's build a new community center. You know, we are absolutely gonna have to do some long-term revision.
Well, to that point, does it make sense for us to try and put some money in the budget to, just kind of look it down here, and it'll get a little bit nicer? You know, I know that we...
You know, between public property and maybe a charge budget for building maintenance, we...
I'm just saying that we're doing the...
Probably get the space, maybe a three-year-old work.
Right, those things are probably older than, you know, I saw Commissioner Noack combined looks like.
Actually, those accordion doors are probably no more than 10 years old.
Well, they look pretty, pretty old.
If you saw what the older ones looked like, you'd maybe wanna puke.
Well, the Diaz is a movable stage that I've never seen moved, you know, things of that nature. I know Commissioner Noack and Mr. Rettler, they haven't yet gone through the front presentations, where you can't actually see what's being presented due to our lack of technology to actually broadcast, share with elected officials, and a lot of other municipalities have multiple screens set up, so that elected officials can see, the public can see, cameraman can
I think between, you know, public property and, well, mostly public property, but you know, right with John, you know, we can start talking about bring a little life to this space.
And I think the point Tom made is that you're breaking ground in the...
If you're doing it for...
In the phone-in hall, that's, you know, making a little span.
I see the Commissioner of Public Property is shaking her head.
In an affirmative manner?
Well, I think we need to give her the opportunity to, you know, talk with John, talk with him.
I know, we just...
You know, this used to all have dark paneling, those accordion doors were like an orange, orange.
That's coming back in.
And that's the orange chairs.
Yes. So, I mean, at the time, we did the best that we could with our limited funds, but it's time for a little bit of screws now. How about, I think we're down to tab 11, general fund grants. How about waterfront, 12?
Again, nine and 12 are the only ones I've really spent a lot of time on. And again, thank you for your efforts and all those questions. Again, revenue's up, expenses are, you know, we're playing those, playing those games. I look forward to next year, actually drafting, you know, we're sitting now with the staff when they draft the budget, because again, we're rolling the dice, respect your numbers, we'll see where we come in high, where we come in low, and then definitely analyze, you know, where we're off. And every budget, again, it's a guide, but it'll have the backing to tell the story in regards to, you know, where we had to pinch pennies and what we didn't get to do, or where we maybe shattered our expectations.
Your Honor, I did mention to each of the elected officials, as I spoke with them one-on-one, that in years to come, frankly, when it's not an election season and there isn't such a state of flux between getting elected, getting sworn in, we've already pretty much got a document prepared. In the years to come, each elected official will be very involved in the building of their line item, it's just impossible to do it in a good office.
I was just going over that with Mr. Vogel from the review before we started tonight. It only happens every four years in an election year. It throws us out of stride just a little bit in terms of the elected officials' early participation in development of the budget, only because, you know, our fiscal year ends May 30th, and we had elections in April, we had to wait to get seated in May, and so it throws it off. But next year, we'll be working on this a little bit earlier. Each of you are gonna have all the opportunity in the world to become very definitely involved as this starts to come together, and not only for your department, all, all of the departments. And of course, by then, you'll have a little better familiarity with the whole budget system by then.
And I think still, it's staff, it's staff's job, you're the ones who get their hands dirty every day, so respect you guys and what your needs are, what your asks are. And again, as elected official, just here to assist where we can help. But again, you guys are the ones who really are drafting your budget, and again, the culture of creating ownership, you mentioned that, but again, it's not a free contract to spend. When, you know, John gets section nine and he has X amount of millions of dollars, it's not just go out and spend away.
Vision.
It's, it's a, you know, it's a, taking ownership is key, and again, you know, the staff demonstrated this over the years, you know, put faith in the budget in regards to you guys are asking and doing what you wanna do.
As part of our purchasing policy, and I, well, it'll be included in your council when we go through the council books, but because we've been in tight spots here for a while, the department heads don't spend a dollar without coming to see Tish and I first. I mean, every expense is vetted through either Tish or I. And obviously, most times, we say yes, especially if it's in the budget, but we really look at really every expense that goes in, so...
You know, in the past, just as an example, you know, put it in some other context, you know, if you had an elected official that might reduce overtime to cut that, so, now, I mean, so it seems like they had, they had, you know, they had elected official might have a conversation with the respective department head and say, hey, you know, how am I gonna cut this out? You know, and I'm just using that one as an example, or spend others. You know, sometimes it's because you might be able to go out to the public and say, well, thanks for saving money, but, you know, thank goodness that we have such a like this, because things like that need to be properly vetted. You know, it's one thing to go out there and say, you know, I want to save some money, but can we really do that? You know, if you want to give up some of the services that go out there.
And everything I heard over the last 30 days on a close Tish and Tim's office have been, if we're not making it, we're not spending it, so that not only are you looking at the revenue, revenue goals, and again, if they're not meeting it, they know they have to, you know, delta spend greater 100 percent.
So I think we're down to tab 13, major funds, the I P and T. Tab 14, non-major governmental funds. And last tab, vehicles and debt service. How about anything not with that ship?
I had two, because I didn't know where to ask it. One was on the revenue side, are there any projects for additional, you know, with the strategic or master plan, whatever you want to call it, any new revenue engines that are out there that can be explored and/or triggers pulled on? I don't know if it's this fiscal year, if it ends up being, you know, if we didn't budget for it, is there anything that still can be done and be considered gravy?
Yeah.
Yeah, any, any revenue engines out there that can be explored or acted upon within the village? Gaming is the one I'm, on the top of my head.
I mean, there are, you could, easily the council could vote to increase fees for various services, permits, were probably below, but many communities charge for various permits, so you could look hard at that. You know, there's a myriad of those, but because not only the village has been in really hard times, so have all of our residents, so the council, rightfully so, has been reluctant to raise, I told you, we ate three years of increases in garbage, village.
And it looked like this year was the year you actually made 30 grand in that.
But that's because we got a really good contract.
Yeah.
So, you know, if the council wants to talk about raising some of those fees, yes, that's a revenue source that could be explored, but we've been reluctant of staff to go there until we get some.
Direction.
Some direction from the council, that's okay.
Video gaming could be a topic, and probably at some point, we should have a discussion about it.
Discussion about it. Yeah. And then the other one was, is anything in the budget, because I just, going back to the wonderful debates we all have at the middle schools, and all that, where Altenheim always tended to be a question, is there anything in the budget with Altenheim specific, or we still have to plan and, and we don't have any money to throw at that now, we still have to come up with a comprehensive plan on what we're doing for all time?
Yes.
So that's fiscal year '17, if we start shovel breaking and stuff like that, if there's funds for that.
Yes. Could we just go back to Dan's point about the revenue thing, which may be an interesting, it's a very good point that he brought up, maybe helpful for all of us, if staff were prepared with different revenue points. And obviously, know that they work on the sales tax, property tax, they're really kind of limited, we kind of do a little bit more comprehensive overview of, you know, the 3.7 percent, I think was the, whatever that number was, that where our different revenue comes from, I know we've got vehicle stickers, building permits, there's a number of different sources that we generate revenue from, and we may take maybe perhaps a comprehensive look at everything would be helpful instead of trying to.
And we had as a resident too, you know, I know I don't want to keep shoveling out taxes and stuff like that as a resident.
Right.
So again, just exploring what's out there.
I think there's, I think you can break into two categories, what we could do is ask staff to, you know, take a look at, you know, all of our non-property and sales tax related items, which are going to be fees for services or incidental taxes, like a vehicle sticker, that sort of thing.
Right.
Where that, you know, we could charge them with a tax, but looking at all of those and what our, you know, annual income is per item, and then say, you know, if you raised them 5, 10, 15 percent, here's what it equals in dollars and cents. I think what Commissioner Noack is saying, and rightfully so, is are there new opportunities? And the video game would be one that would fall in that category, brand new opportunity that we currently are not receiving. And I, and we would ask them to think about if there might be some others. I don't know what those might be right off the top of my head, but, you know, think about what else might be out there.
Well, when Commissioner Rettler and I attended a class of colleges, they gave us three pages of new revenue sources.
What were some of those items, you know?
Well, I was going to sit down with Tim and Tish over this week or so, show the things that we can there that.
Yes.
Some of the stuff I never even thought of that is a good revenue source.
Now, did they talk about whether or not they apply to non-home rule, home rule?
It does list, yeah. It does list if it's exclusive to home rule or if it's something that.
Home rule definitely has a little more flexibility, you know, than we do, but that's not to say that there might be some other new revenue sources out there, so that would be a good exercise for staff to work through. And maybe we can't get it implemented in this current fiscal year, but we can start planning for it, maybe for our soon years.
Just for the record, I wouldn't mind at all, and neither would Tish, if there was more revenue than we could. It's hard, it's hard operating $20 million with $22,000 a fluff, so.
I don't, I don't want to show any of my cards at the moment, but I'm just going to talk freely, I shared it with some of y'all already. Yesterday, I was a little bit bored last night, and I was looking at gaming revenue in the city of Brooklyn for the month of May. During the month of May, $8 million was wagered amongst 191 machines in 41 or 42 establishments. $8 million was wagered in there. Out of that, they paid out $7 million, and then the net ends up getting distributed to the internal operator, the business owner of the city. City made $30,000 for the, for the month of May. Of course, I mean, if you carried it out, annualized it, that's a significant chunk of money. I mean, this is real money. It's real money. And, you know, so we probably are going to need to do a little more analysis on that, and at some point, we probably should have a discussion. And it's not the next year, but in their particular case, because they are home rule, they charge $1,000 per machine per year for licensing. As I already said, there's 191 machines, so just do them at yourself.
Add three zeros.
That's, that's real money.
Mayor, what can we get as a non-home rule?
$25.
$25.
I agree with that, I just wanted you to say for the record.
Yeah.
$25?
Thank you, Senator.
$25 per machine.
$7,000.
Yes. But that's not to say that we cannot think outside the box and get a little creative. And let's say we were to go in that direction, then for those establishments that are going to have machines, that we couldn't create a separate liquor license classification and increase the fee $5,000 if you want to have that, that particular type of license. So I think that fits right in with where there's a will, there's a way, sometimes you just got to be a little creative. And I also, I just want to echo what Commissioner Noack said, you know, I think it's incumbent upon all of us to, you know, lessen the tax impact to the local homeowner, let's try to minimize that impact, let's try and capitalize on things that we can raise in revenue on without touching that property or whatever they may be. Put up a toll gate and charge.
I mean, let's do it.
Charge the advertising on your side.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's probably any number of opportunities, and I think that's what we're going to charge staff with, is just, you know, start getting their heads put together, do a little think-taking, and, you know, maybe come back and list the recommendations.
It's teasing, actually.
I thought that, I wanted to say it.
Other than that, you know.
Happy birthday, mom.
Yeah.
I certainly want to commend the staff, as always, they do a terrific job, a lot of hard work into this, but more importantly, and as Tim mentioned several times, and I know this for a fact, throughout the course of the year, this is a fluid project, and throughout the course of the year, each and every month, I mean, they're looking at the revenue side in conjunction with the expense side, but when things appear to be not coming in as we had forecasted, our department has truly do an excellent job in adjusting those non-essential items that they can put on, so perhaps either next year, or maybe in some cases, throughout the course of the year, you know, the revenue income starts to show good signs, so, you know, they're able to go back and pick up where they left off, so they've always done just a superb job.
And the last thing I have, I promise, is the last thing. You guys said you do the budget status on a monthly basis?
We do, yes.
We, we see the bills payable and just still working our way through the meetings. We see the bill, everything you're paying on a monthly status. Does that, that budget status with previous year comparison ever come to the council, or is that more an internal staff?
So there's a, there'll be a finance report, starting in July, there'll be like a finance report.
Okay.
Included with the council agenda, which will basically show a summary of the revenues and expenditures, and I'll have a balance sheet for, so it'll do, I'll do operating funds, and then I'll do the primary government's all funds. And then you, for your particular apartment, will see your line item. Does that answer the question?
Yep. And again, you're showing the budget number on that report?
Yeah.
And the actual?
Yes, yes.
Total budget and actual.
And does it have a comparison of?
Prior fiscal year.
Prior fiscal year? It does. Okay.
Any other questions? Leonard paying a motion to adjourn, so, Nanny, is there a second?
Second.
Everybody wants a second? Now, of course, you can call, we'll call.
Commissioner Burns?
Hi.
Commissioner Nittit?
Hi.
Commissioner Hovig?
Hi.
We stand adjourned.
There's still pizza inside here, so if you guys want some.